Okay, good evening everybody. We have one hearing scheduled before tonight, but before we start, is anybody here from the public who has anything to say, any comments, questions on anything that has, anything to do with other than the hearing that's about to come before us tonight? No? Okay, then we will start the proceedings tonight with a, what was scheduled for seven o'clock, for a site plan amendment to expand parking lot at 766 North King Street, North Hampton Map ID 821. And, presentation?
Jeff. My name is Jeff Elym. I guess the manager, one of the owners of the building, but also the general manager of Pioneer Spine and Sports Possessions, which is the second floor tenant of the building. There's two other tenants, Dr. Mary Pat Roy and Ear, Nose and Throat Associates. Building's been in existence for, I think, about six or seven years, I forget the exact date. We've built the building for the use that it's being used now. The issue is, is that we just want to, we've got the accessible land. When we built the building, we had a total of forty-nine spaces, thirty-three generally used and six handicap parking spaces. And, over the last seven years, businesses have somewhat grown, but more than anything, we just want to use the available land that we have there, just to increase accessibility and convenience for the patients that use that. It's kind of simple. I mean, we've got, the land is there, we're not looking to do any blasting, we're not looking to bring any big excavations. We've got a small piece of land, about twelve feet to the back, that is already leveled, there's already two catch basins there. All we're looking to do is just, when we repave the lot, which we're planning on doing in the spring, we just want to push back about twelve feet, just to increase and pick up between, we're hoping between six to ten, reality is, we'll probably pick up about eight parking spaces. And again, it's just for the convenience of our patients, just so the board does know, we've looked at every alternative. There's the Sunoco Station next to us, we've approached them on three different occasions, they have quite a bit of land that they don't use. We asked them to lease, lease us their spots, rent us spots, but they refused to let us use any of the land there for parking. We did look at trying to have our employees, the employees of the building shuttle to another site, so there's more paved parking, but the reality is, that's not convenient and it's really not safe and ideal. So, and ultimately, we decided that we needed to redo the parking lot, it's, this winter particularly, it's taken a beating with the conditions. So when we do repave it in the spring, we're just looking to expand to the land that we already have.
A couple of questions. You started, when it was originally constructed, you had four or forty-nine spaces, probably so, yes. And now, it looks like, you're assuming for fifty-nine?
It says fifty-nine, the reality is, I think it'll probably be fifty, fifty-seven. I mean, I think if we pick up eight more spaces, I think we'll be fine. There is, we're hoping, depending on the board tonight, obviously, we're hoping that it's approved. I've been in contact with the State of Massachusetts about possibly putting an electric car charging station there. There is some grants available, so I've contacted them. We're trying to, you know, if we're going to do this, we'd like to do it so that it's convenient and make that accessible. So that's one of the, one of the spots that's taken.
It looks in, like in the middle, where existing parking is now, the new layout, you're trying to squeeze a couple more spots in that center.
We do have, there's a couple of spots that the engineers determined are wider than they need to be, and we've seen that, so that when we go to repave it, we did say that we could repave it in such a manner that we might be able to pick up a couple of spots. We're not going to do it to the point that, you know, that people can't park conveniently. So that's why, if we determine that it's just not going to fit, I think the fifty-nine could become fifty-seven.
The convenience factor is the one issue I was thinking of, because your typical parking space spaces you out as nine foot width, which is standard, but in the middle, it looks like there's maybe eight, seven or eight spaces here that are down to eight and a half.
Yeah, and that's why, we may not go that route.
Cars or?
Yeah, we've got the handicap parking spaces, obviously, those are untouchable, we want to pick up a few more. We do see more and more people. One of the things that's being offered now is a pediatric clinic, there's, unfortunately, there is, there's, Shiner's Hospital in Springfield has cut way back on their pediatric services. We have people coming as far as Worcester to be, with their children, to be seen for specialty pediatric, and they do come in a van, so that requires a little bit more space. We want to make that available, but ultimately, if we determine that those spaces are not as wide as they need to be, and we would mark some out for compact cars, but ultimately, if they're not, then those spaces would be diminished by two to bring them back up to nine feet.
Just so you, our standard is eight and a half, right? So it's still meet the zoning standard.
Questions from the public? Are there staff comments on this or?
No, I mean, our recommendation is for approval, there's, you know, it's all sort of within the paved footprint, except for that little bit behind the building, and there's lots of undeveloped land, so there's no issue with open space. And, I think we all know, medical officers have higher demands for parking and other uses.
My only question is, what degree of lot coverage is the base surface?
Do you know what it is, the weight will be?
Uh, I'm sorry, what's the?
Percentage of land is?
I don't want to give you the wrong percentage, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Probably in the applications, sorry. The lot goes up the hill.
There's quite a large hill that goes up, and we did, we did actually excavate in, we did the excavation, is here. There is no ledge back there, that was one of the considerations, but we did determine that it would be prohibitively expensive to go back into that lot. The retaining wall alone, I think, for something that big, would have been in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I don't think would have been practical.
I don't remember being concerned before we approved it.
We've actually reduced the open space requirements in HB since then, it was twenty percent originally, and now it's more just about the buffers and the landscape. So it certainly doesn't, there's no implication in terms of zoning ordinance.
So as it is, you're pushing back into the hillside, building retaining wall in the back.
The retaining wall would only be, if you want to call it that, it's about a three foot wall, it's basically so people don't just keep driving into the hill.
Looks like it's an eight foot wall.
No, it's, I think it's, there's one around the side of the building would be, there's a retaining wall, eight foot wall there. The remaining wall that we're pushing back would only be, I think, three, three, four, maybe five feet at most.
Because it's got a finished elevation on the pavement of one ninety-nine, and top of all elevation of two oh seven, along the back of the parking, the whole length two oh seven. Which, it's a roll, but that's.
I think, yeah, he put that, I don't know if it'll ultimately be that, I think he put that just so that, that was the most it would be. We're certainly hoping it's not going to be that. He told me he estimated it to be about three or four, between three and four feet.
Okay. I mean, I didn't have any issues with it, other than potentially the convenience factor, that you can have spaces, but that's up to, depending on if it works or hasn't.
Will there be any change in lighting?
No, the lighting would be the same, actually. The lights that are there actually go out into the hill where we would be anyway, so there's no more, there's no additional lighting that would be required.
Or you're relocating the lights?
We're relocating too, just for convenience, to get them out of, we do, we've had a couple of instances where tractor trailers on the weekends decide to use our lot to turn around and taking out a couple of holes.
Or from the public? Any questions from the public?
Can you move to the top of the table?
All right, now, on favor. Okay, public discussion is closed. Bring it down. Everybody, one view.
Frank.
Frank.
I don't have the sheet.
Oh, come on.
Oh, actually, you may, oh, she took it. It's not the.
[laughing]
You want me?
Yeah.
This is my final half. Okay, I moved to approve the site plan amendment to expand parking, parking lot at 766 North King Street, North Hampton Map ID 821.
On favor. All right, you have a second?
Second.
Second. On favor. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Yep, still.
Yeah, this is. So, did? Did I email the ways to zoning, the changes, right, to the special permit? Yeah. So, do you want me to go over that? That's basically the only other thing, I have the subdivision regs, but I only got a chance to print one copy, so I can look at it. TPW, we're going to sit down with TPW next week, actually, to go over those, so. But the special permit criteria for the construction of one and seven units in DNC, be modified mostly by adding that last bullet under nine to talk about, to address design. And that was, a lot of those ideas sort of came out of the public meeting we had on the, with the Lyman Road, South Street neighborhood, relative to potential redevelopment issues that might arise for the Lyman State. So, I mean, it was quite a good turnout, and there was lots of good discussion about concerns about providing both smaller and age-influenced housing, as well as some additional design criteria, but I think it was a really productive meeting in that regard. So we decided to, because they don't just apply to the Lyman State, we thought it might be beneficial to also apply them right now, as we're moving forward on the special permit criteria. So, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that, if you have questions, or?
I don't see, I don't think I have what you have. I have like ordinance, is that?
Well, I had it in ordinance format, and it was two pages, so officially, so that we could go ahead and, I could just email it to city council, I think that this is what you're looking at.
If you want to walk us through those, please.
Yeah, let me just pull it up on my screen.
Was this, was this after any input from the Ward Three people? Because that was sort of the driving force behind the moratorium, right?
Right. So, well, the meeting about the Lyman State incorporates Ward, parts of Ward Three, two people there. And, I think, you know, originally, basically, based on what their comments were, before we came back to you, that was, a lot of that, the original drafting of plan, which was based on comments from Ward Three Association, so we've sort of done that exercise, and it's just adding on to that and refining it.
What's that?
A daily line meeting.
So, hold on, just. So, if we go through, so, everything stayed the same from your, the draft that you guys already reviewed up until bullet point eight and nine. So we've added, so this is, again, design criteria for projects that entail seven or more units on a parcel, and originally, there was a split in the language, if you remember the language adopted, there was a split between construction of seven units and construction of ten units. And this, the goal for this is just to simplify and say, anything over seven, you have to follow these criteria to three units or second tier. So, number eight, buildings shall be either, sort of, there's a laundry list of ways to comply with this, US Green Building Council LEED New Construction Certified, or be US Green Building Council LEED New Development Certified, or fifteen percent of the units, I'm sorry, I should go back to, I want to explain A and B before I move on. So there was a lot of discussion in Deb, and you can probably fill in on that, that people were concerned about making sure that these were, that anytime we were building new bigger projects, that they be energy efficient to the greatest extent possible. And, so, I don't know if this got out of order here, I guess C was fifteen percent of the units to meet zoning definition of affordability, or that all buildings should be net zero construction of a gross rating of zero, or fifty percent or more of the units are no longer than twelve hundred square feet gross floor area for at least five years from certificate of occupancy. I mean, that's a lot of language about how to structure a unit, but it's sort of a pick list, to try to get at those goals that people were trying to, you know, reach.
Yes, so I have a comment about the A and B. You know, if it's, if the goal is to make them as energy efficient as possible, I don't know that the LEED rating system is going to get you there. You can have a LEED certified building, you can have a LEED gold building, and it can still use a lot of energy. So, one other issue I have with the municipality, you know, having this as a requirement, I mean, I know it's an OR, but still, and it's, you know, there's a lot of conversation out there about, about a municipality or anyone requiring LEED certification when US Green Building Council is a private industry, it's a private company, so you're making people give money to a private company. So there's, there's issues there. I might suggest maybe saying that it has to be such a percentage over the stretch code, energy stretch code. It might get you maybe more where you want to be.
Yeah. I think that's a good thought, I mean, there actually was conversation in that meeting about whether, I mean, LEED is sort of the only industry standard now for that, but there, but just, like you said, just because you have LEED points doesn't mean you're really totally energy efficient. I mean, there are a whole bunch of other ways to increase your carbon footprint, even if you have LEED points, like fast food restaurants, for example, that happen to be LEED certified.
One way around that, because I'm, I am a LEED approved person that's never done it, and the demanding that it be certified is an awful lot of paperwork, and it doesn't literally change the building. So, there might be a way that we could say, follow the guidelines of.
That is equivalent?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a LEED AP, and I have done a LEED building. No, no, no. But, and a lot of, a lot of projects do decide for the amount, you know, to save money or in paperwork to say you're certifiable, but again, I don't know that that's getting you to being a highly energy efficient.
What about energy stock?
Well, isn't that less than a stretch code in some cases, or?
I think the stretch code incorporates that. I think the stretch code, using what we have, the stretch code maybe doing a little more than that is the avenue to go down versus, I had an issue with the LEED as well, because almost by default now, good design is sustainable design, it might not be, it might be on a par with LEED certification, but the process of getting certified is an arduous one, it can take several months, and there's a cost that goes to that, and it doesn't necessarily increase the sustainable design or the, you know, the amount of energy that the building uses. So, yeah, I think the focus should be more on what the city has to work with stretch codes and so forth versus, versus an actual certification.
What do you think would be maybe a comparable or goal for stretch code for, you know, if we could do a percentage over that? What, how, have you thought about what language that would be?
No, I, I could look into it, I don't know, fifteen percent comes to mind, I'm not sure where I'm following up from, you guys from, I don't know.
It's hard to define.
Yeah, but, you know, if you talk to a HERS rate of two, we probably have a good idea.
And so how would that relate to that next one that talks about the offer, the option of bringing your HERS rating down to?
Well, net zero, well, God bless the Bible.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, I mean, yeah, we actually hear more and more people talking about wanting to achieve that goal in their development scheme, so I don't know, it seems to me that that might be, you know, that's coming, going to become more frequent, or more frequent goal.
Frequent goal, I can see, more frequent, I can't see, I mean, not, just not now, not in the immediate future.
Okay.
What kind of car do you drive?
Why?
Could you be driving one that's significantly more efficient? I mean, it seems to me that some of these requirements are lower in the hard side compared to what you would do if you were building a private house. I mean, I think it's an ideal goal, but if you really want to take it all away, you should just require zero permanent footprint.
Well, I think a LEED certification is undue, and I don't think that in itself gets what the intent is to.
The certification costs, just to send the news for it, a thousand dollars you're putting in the energy saving.
Right. There's no, I mean, there's no incentive, there's very little incentive for developer, or anyone. It's very limited, LEED certification, the incentive other than a nice plaque on the wall, or for marketing, or so forth, it doesn't change the design, it doesn't change anything, it's just a certification. There's some public buildings, libraries and so forth, there are programs, that if you reach a certain level of LEED certification, you get, you get money back, and that's great. But that doesn't apply here, and it would be hard to make that requirement. I agree that we should make that requirement, since it's undue, hard. But I don't know of the alternative.
Well, so, looking at this, this, you know, a developer, is when does, like, some drop out, like, oh, this is the easy one, this is the little hanging fruit that everyone's going to pick? Like, if it's not truly equal options, then maybe there's nothing going on, if people are always going to pick the same?
Right, I mean, the net zero is not the option people are going to go to, they're not going to go toward LEED certification, and so that, you know, you end up with a small gross footprint.
Or the affordable housing, and those two things are sort of ultimately versions of themselves. I mean, smaller places.
They can be, they can be, right.
Right. I think a percentage, you know, energy efficiency over the stretch code, I think that's realistic, and I think it's what, I think it's what you do in the energy section of LEEDs. So I think that could, that could serve almost what you're trying to get at in A and B.
And have it be a viable option.
Absolutely.
Truly, I mean, these days, it doesn't take much design effort to reach a design that's certified, without going through the whole process, because it just makes sense from building and future maintenance standpoint, to have something, high R values in building envelope and so forth.
How does that compare to stretch code?
It surpassed, a LEED certified, it will meet or surpass the stretch code, but we could, we could take a percentage and try to figure out what percentage is a goal that's achievable, that will, that will be better than just baseline stretch code, but is yet achievable, without being burdensome.
Yeah, in fact, maybe we refer to the LEED section in energy usage, and see what those points are for what the percentage of savings is, and take something out of that.
Okay, I'm just wondering if then maybe we could leave that sort of as a benchmark for what that percentage over stretch code would be, so we could do some of that, and see what compares.
Then you're not worried about groundwater and being sliced out that piece that we're trying to get to.
Now's the time to have the conversation of, can we, if we as a community have set stretch code as our building target, which we have, then can we pick a certain place in the statutes and say, well, do you want more than that? Is there any?
Well, we can't.
naive question.
No, no, it's not, I mean, zoning can't regulate what's normally regulated under building code, so, you know, stretch code is clearly building code regulation. This is special permit, so that's why we can't dictate what, how you build, because we can't, we can't cross that path, but because it's a special permit and you're asking for these sort of additional things, then we have more flexibility to say, here are some options we really, we need to consider, you know, that have to do with energy efficiency.
Okay, okay.
So, okay, well, we can take away that, I can talk with the building contractor and see what his take is, how we might get above that. Okay. So, then number nine, a special permit filed under this provision may be submitted for review and approval prior to and separately from a fully engineered site plan, so long as the following items are identified in a preliminary site plan with a special permit application, and full detailed engineered site plans are filed for review and approval prior to commencing a construction. So, this is sort of, this is trying to enable applicants to go through and sort of see what they're, whether or not they're going to be able to go special permit for the board before they spend thousands of dollars on an engineered plan.
I've all made that mention before.
Yeah. And since we haven't, like you said, we've had that issue before, but we haven't really specified what, how it's allowed, whether it's allowed, and so there's always been this gray area about whether you can do it first or you have to do it later. So, this sort of makes it legal in this context to say, you can go first with your special permit, so long as we have the following things identified, and then you can come back later for your very fully engineered site plan. And then those items would, for the initial review, would be roadway and driveway alignment, showing standards with, showing compliance with the connectivity standards that were identified in items one through seven, buffers and preliminary landscape providing for street neighborhoods, proposed location of park and open spaces, building envelopes and location, and anticipated building types and number of units, total number of units. In any special permit approval granted with only a preliminary site plan, the board may establish thresholds in which amendment of that special permit is required either prior to or in parallel with review of the full engineered plan. And again, this is sort of the tight enough, and almost like a flag or placeholder for the board, when they're approving a special permit, in these circumstances to specifically identify what's going to trigger an amendment. We've seen that recently about an issue about whether or not special permit should be triggered, and it's, you know, it can, it's not always clear at those, those points, so that's why we have this proposed statute. And then we felt like A through E, the items that you have to submit, are really sort of bubble diagrams, maybe a little bit more detailed, so that the neighborhood gets a sense of where things are going to be located, what's the total number of units are going to be, where's the, where are the open space areas, you know, enough of that information to say, if this project makes sense.
Right. Yeah, that's, I mean, with the fact. Yeah, that, I mean, we've had, we've had that issue before where it's just a lot of effort to get an engineered set, just to get, to find out if you can move forward, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, go back to number eight. There's something wrong with the syntax of the, buildings shall, I don't know what it says. Like number E, I don't know, what does that mean? Buildings shall fifty percent or more of the units go where you're opening.
You mean it's not a verb is what you're saying.
What?
It's not a verb is what you're saying.
What, Mark?
The word have should be before fifty percent. So buildings shall have, or, yeah, have fifty percent, or something like that.
Yeah, sort of that.
So I think all of them, except the first, I mean, something.
That's a good change.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna miss you. That's not true.
Well, I'm sorry.
We're gonna miss you.
Oh. I, I'll come and clear my...
I will send you all of my, um, ordinance, ordinance...
Send the minutes out before, yeah.
...a minute to you first, before I send it to the board.
Okay, well, go for you. I'll have plenty of time.
Okay, so that's good, so we're not gonna, oh, this is just in the ordinance form.
Yeah, so it's not quite ready to ship. I'll bring it back to you with that language about the, um, stretch code before we send it to council. So off the hurry up and do that, too. We're getting closer and closer to the do I. Um, so, did I send you minutes? Give me a minute.
Once, we've got one set of minutes from January twenty-third.
Yeah, lots and lots of pages.
I've got an extra page.
That was a good meeting, that was good.
I knew we approved the minutes of January twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
Seconds, and on favor. Oh, we have this too. How do you know those were?
Okay, so this is, um, I don't know why, I ha, I guess I did need to put this on the agenda. Um, I thought I was waiting for more information, but I don't have the exact point yet. Um, but, so, there was a petition, you guys looked at, do we talk about this before? I think it's in here, okay.
Was it snowed out, were there snowed out?
Yeah, so, um, um, we, we did a street petition, you guys have, um, looked at a street petition um, for Cook Avenue, a couple of meetings ago. And, um, and that went up to the edge of, um, the old Moose Lodge, which is also, there's a recent trail access to the showway. So, um, during that conversation, there were a group of property owners back in there off of what is referred to as Boggy Matter Road, which is really the trail. Um, it's an old woods road back in there. Asked TPW if they could just attach that section onto the Cook Avenue request for street acceptance. And Board of Public Works said, no, you can't do that. So then they came back and formally petitioned for that dirt path to be a street, to become a street. Um, and so it's Boggy Matter Road. So, what you, um, what I have here is this memo, um, from Wayne, um, about the street acceptance. And I'll just, um, read it into the record. A petition for street acceptance of three hundred sixteen point two foot portion of a trail known as Boggy Matters Road was filed with city council. The office of planning and sustainability recommends against accepting this as a street for several reasons. It has never functioned as a road. This trail has never, um, uh, simply a gravelly narrow right of way that abutters have shared rights and access to. Street acceptance is not a substitute for subdivision approval. Uh, the proper way to make a trail with no history of being a road into a road is to file subdivision approval, build the road to subdivision standards, and petition for street acceptance. Um, there's no right of way available, although there are shared rights of access to the trail under general fee statute, the abutting property owners own to the center line of the trail. And this means that half the trail is owned by North Hampton Conservation Commission, and they have not granted permission to the right of way. And such right of way would require an eminent domain taking and damages. Um, and then finally, um, state legislative rule was required because the land is partially owned by Conservation Commission and would take an Article ninety-seven amendment to the state constitution for any conversion of conservation land to another purpose. Um, so, for those reasons, our office recommends the board, that city council not accept it and certainly that the planning board recommends city council not accept that portion of Boggy Matter Road.
We've had a lot of roads come for us that was just based on our opinion. What do you, what do you think is a road, is it not a road? Without a lot of background, this seems clear, this is not a road.
If you walk it, you know it's not a road.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I've never actually been on it, or quite a houses, there must be houses.
No, it's just, it's just walking.
So who wants to turn this a little bit? So the landowner's gonna butt it further back behind the Moose Lodge, because then that, once you have a street, then you have frontage and then you could come in and potentially develop it, use it or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Do you foresee that the abutters will have access to people who currently use that as a walking question?
No, because it's already written into, I mean, there's rights that pass.
Conservation property owns half of it anyway.
I refuse myself to make this thing, before I knew where, you know, Boggy Matter Road was, I thought that I would, I was about it.
Do you need a recommendation from us, then?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda.
I knew we recommended to city council that Boggy Matter Lobby, Meadow Road, Troy Road. Yeah, Troy Road.
Second. Second, on favor. Any of you? That's all I got. Jen?
Hi, second.
Where's Karen?